We're just gonna roll right over?
It's up to you.
Okay, let's roll right over into our regular board meeting. Good evening again.
And ma'am, before you roll into your new board meeting, did you receive the updated amendments to the agenda items? Uh, Kristen?
There's no.
You're gonna bring them over? Okay, because we're gonna have to amend the agenda.
Okay.
Well, let's start with the roll call. Um, good evening and welcome to this evening's Board of Education meeting. I call this meeting to order at 7:37. Uh, Ms. Janun, please take role.
This is Barry.
Here.
Mr. Baydun.
Here.
Ms. Elzayat.
Here.
Ms. Fawaz.
Here.
Ms. Sal, Ms. Kaminsky.
Here.
Mr. Saba.
Here.
Madam Chair, you're a quorum.
Thank you. If we can do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Are we amending? Are we amending the consent agenda?
No.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Do you wanna amend, Ms. Kaminsky?
Um, soon as I read one amendment.
Action item approval over superintendent's goals.
Oh, Madam Chair.
Ms. Kaminsky.
I would like to amend the agenda to include the superintendent's goals that was discussed at the study session meeting last week and the superintendent evaluation rubric.
Um, we have a motion on the, oh, we're going to amend. Are we voting on it in this?
Yes.
As we speak, okay.
Yes.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor from Ms. Kaminsky to approve the superintendent's goals for 20, from January 2022 through December 2022. A support by Mr. Baydun. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any questions? I'm sorry. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, um, you know what? We need to do the consent agenda, Ms. Janun. You lost me on that. Okay, Ms. Janun, consent agenda, please.
Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the January 24th, 2022 board agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, January 10th, 2022, and the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, January 10th, 2022.
Support.
We have a consent agenda. Um, Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed in the consent agenda, which include the January 24th, 2022 board agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, January 10th, 2022, and the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, January 10th, 2022. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Doc, Ms. Morgan.
Thank you.
Before we begin, Madam President, I wanted to let you know that we had submitted to us today, um, I'm sorry, Penny, um, our students put together a video. And I didn't want to wait until my commentary about board appreciation month, so I wanted to do it first and foremost before we begin the meeting, because I think it's the best way to start. So, Mr. Green, if you can set that up and run it.
Thanks for everything you do for the teachers.
We are thankful for your support.
We are thankful for your commitment.
We thank you for your service.
Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you for keeping us safe.
We are thankful for your time.
Thank you for our bravery.
Thank you for giving us our art lessons. Who knows? I may grow up to be a graphic artist and maybe make a million bucks.
We love you, kids!
Thank you for giving us P.E.
It keeps us healthy.
Okay, ready, go. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Thank you, President Barry, for all you do.
Thank you, Vice President Kaminsky, for all you do for our students.
Thank you so much, Secretary Janun.
Thank you, Senator Alzayat.
Thank you, Trustee Fawaz.
Thank you, Trustee Saba.
Thank you, Trustee Baydun.
Hello, Crestwood School Board. This is Mrs. Assad Hill, Crest Principal. Just want to say thank you. We appreciate you. Thank you, Ms. Barry. Thank you, Ms. Janun. Thank you, Ms. Kaminsky. Thank you, Ms. Elzayat. Thank you, Ms. Fawaz. Thank you, Mr. Saba. Thank you, Mr. Baydun. Thank you for all you do every day for our students and community here in the school district. We appreciate you.
Hello, everyone. Sending you much appreciation here from Highview. I would like to thank each and every one of you for your dedication to excellence that makes our schools the safe, happy, and productive places they are. During this month of January, we celebrate you all. We look forward to continued partnerships as we all strive to make Crestwood Schools the very best schools. May you and your loved ones remain safe.
Hello, Crestwood School Board members. It's Mrs. Marveso and my friend, Kinlock the Koala. We would like to take a minute and thank you for supporting all of our building level initiatives. Our students are happy, healthy, and enjoying their learning experience here at Kinlock. Thank you for all that you do.
This is exactly what it's about. That's why we do what we do. And we appreciate you thinking of us. Um, any words from the board members?
For the tear to my eye.
Yes. I, yeah. But look, thank God I have my mask on because it caught the tears.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. That was beautiful. It really was.
Thank you. Very nice.
Okay.
How do you follow that?
That's why I did it first.
Yeah. Okay, business report.
Number one, approval of requisitions. The attached list of requisitions are items that buildings or departments would like to purchase for their upcoming needs. The requisitions have gone through all the appropriate approval processes and have approved, been approved by administration for purchase. In addition, there are funds available to make these purchases. Once the requisitions are approved, they will be processed and purchase orders will be sent out.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Elzayat.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions per attachment 4A1.
Support.
Okay. We have a recommendation from Ms. Elzayat, supported by Mr. Baydun, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisition per attachment 4A1. Um, any questions or comments? With that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Number two, approval of confirming purchase orders. The attached confirming purchase order are items that need to be processed prior to the board approval. This purchase order replaces a previously approved purchase order to a different vendor for the same item. The previous vendor was, has been unable to fulfill the order due, in due time.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Kaminsky.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the confirming purchase orders per attachment 4A2.
Support.
Okay, was it? Okay. We have a motion on the floor from Ms. Kaminsky, supported by Mr. Baydun, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the confirming purchase orders per attachment 4A2. Uh, is there any questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Fawaz.
Uh, we, this is not paying for the same item twice, right? We just never fulfilled with the other company.
No, we had to cancel the previous order because it was backordered and we could not get it.
Okay.
Any other questions? With that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Number three, approval of Trune Law Firm. Trune Law Firm has been one of the district's attorneys for over 20 years. Administration would like to continue utilizing their firm to capitalize on their expertise in specialized areas of expertise. They have effectively represented our district and provided legal services to hundreds of other districts across the state.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Saba.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the annual retainer contract with Trune Law Firm in the amount of $2,500 for the 2022 calendar year. See attachment 4A3.
Uh, we have a motion from Mr. Saba, supported from Ms. Janun, uh, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the annual retainer contract with Trune Law Firm in the amount of $2,500 for the 2022 calendar year. See attachment 4A3. Is there any questions, comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Personnel report. Dr. Lozare.
Hey, our first action item tonight is the appointment of food service lunch monitor for Crestwood High School, Ms. Hanan Nooradeen. Ms. Nooradeen has had a love of working with children and spent time volunteering to help students with homework after school. She's very excited about having the opportunity to work in a school setting and support students.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Fawaz.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Hanan Nooradeen as a lunch monitor for the 2122 school year, according to the CFT contract, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 5A1.
Support.
We have a motion from Ms. Fawaz, supported by Ms. Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Hanan Nooradeen as a lunch monitor for the 2122 school year, according to the CFS contract, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 5A1. Is there any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion ca, any opposed? Motion carries. Welcome to Ms. Hanan.
Our second, our second action item tonight is appointment of food services lunch monitor for Kinlock Elementary, Ms. Samira Assad. Ms. Assad is a mother of six who enjoys being around children. She's excited and looking forward to monitoring at Kinlock Elementary.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Janun.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Samira Assad as a lunch monitor for the 2122 school year, according to the CFS contract, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 5A2.
Support.
We have a motion from Ms. Janun, supported by Mr. Baydun, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Samira Assad as a lunch monitor for the 2122 school year, according to the CFS contract, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 5A2. Is there any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Welcome to Ms. Samira Assad.
Our third action item for tonight is the appointment of special education teacher for Highview Elementary, Ms. Dunia Thalji. Ms. Thalji earned her Bachelor of Arts in Education from the University of Michigan Dearborn, where she was awarded the Chancellor's Medallion, as well as being recognized as a James Engel Scholar. She has over 10 years of combined experience in the field of education and is deeply passionate about serving students with special needs. She has served as a special education department head in her building for seven years. In addition, Ms. Thalji has done work with the University of Michigan Dearborn Alumni Board. She has mentored student and pre-student teachers and works diligently to ensure students' individual needs are met and students feel success.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Saba.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Dunia Thalji as a special education resource teacher for the 2021-2022 school year, according to the CFT contract BA, step eight, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 5A3.
Support.
We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Saba, supported by Ms. Janun, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Dunia Thalji as a special education resource teacher for the 2122 school year, according to the CFT contract BA, step eight, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 5A3. Is there any comments or questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Yay, that was a quick one. Uh, superintendent's report. Moving on.
No, there's information.
Do you want me to read off the informational items?
I, and I'm a since, I have superintendent's report.
No, there's information.
Right here, okay.
For personnel.
Oh. Go ahead.
Okay. First informational item is a change in classification from Samantha Kohler, from Building Secretary at Riverside Middle School, to Secretary to the Principal at Riverside Middle School, effective January 25th, tomorrow. Uh, we do have some resignations and we wish them the best of luck. Dr. Heidi Abadi from Special Ed, Ms. Elizabeth Johnson in Elementary Music, and Ms. Erica Robinson from Special Ed. And we do also have a retirement we're announcing today for Ms. Lori Davison, who was the counselor at Riverside Middle School. We wish her the best in her retirement and thank her for all of her years of dedication to the Crestwood Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck to all. Okay, moving on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, there is, as you mentioned earlier, there has been an adjustment to the agenda. We have one action item. It is listed in this document that was given to you from Mrs. Frisell.
I thought we did that in the very beginning.
You did, but.
We did.
Vote Anna. Okay. Are we ready to vote?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Elzayat.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the superintendent's goals for January 2022 through December 2022, per attachments 6A1 and 6A1B.
Support.
Can I have yours to read?
I'm sorry?
Can I have yours to read?
Yes, you may. It's basically on this one sheet, right there.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Ms. Elzayat, supported by Ms. Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the superintendent's goals for the 20, 20, what, January?
January 2022.
2022 to December 2022. Is there any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. I was trying to make it as easy as possible.
I see that, but I don't mind my papers.
That's okay. Thank you. Uh, which has a few informational items. Uh, first, uh, some staff recognition. I want to give Mr. Brian Paul, who's a fourth grade teacher at Highview. Um, he presented in Lan, he's going to be presenting in Lansing to the Michigan State Board of Education, at the Michigan Department of Education, on trauma and the effects on education for both students and teachers. These are the type of things we're trying to do with our teachers. Get them out there. Get them presenting. Let them show people that, you know, people like Mr. Brian Paul, this is what Crestwood is about. So, I'm very proud of Mr. Paul. And he actually, I have to say, he seeks this out. He doesn't just wait for somebody to ask him. That's what we need here at Crestwood, and I appreciate that. Also, to add to this, Mr. Brian Paul was also asked to give a statement, uh, to the Governor's Office on supporting teacher preparedness. He did so. Governor's Office accepted it, and he also got a response from the state superintendent thanking him for his response. So, I want to thank Mr. Brian Paul for being, you know, a true representative of the Crestwood Schools. I also want to congratulate Mrs. Batu Hussein. This is another thing that we want more of our Crestwood staff to do. Uh, and her research team were able to publish in the National Science Teachers Association. Uh, they will be heading to, uh, they will be heading to the National Science Teachers Association meeting in, uh, in the spring, and they'll be presenting to that association on their findings. So, again, another Crestwood Schools teacher presenting on research findings, which is only gonna benefit all of us. Um, what I also want to say is that we have so many great teachers in this district, and it's about us working together. It's not about one group or another group. It's about everybody finding what is in the best interest for children. We're gonna continue moving forward with that focus, or only focus. I also want to recognize that, uh, our district received, uh, commendation for sending staff, specifically Mrs. Andrea O'Hair, who's sitting over there quietly, for leading the MTSS structure and process here in the Crestwood Schools. So, I want to congratulate Mrs. O'Hair, as well as the MTSS team for following through on their professional development. I also want to reference, as you received in the previous Friday update, that our Child Care Sustainability Grant was approved, and the team, as you saw in the previous updates, is moving forward with that. Ms. Morgan, what was that total amount again? I apologize.
It was approximately $130,000 between the two programs.
So, this is gonna help us extensively for, and I want to give Mrs. Emily Ansonic and her team, uh, props. They jumped all over this. They got to work on it. They needed some information. They reached out to the right people and got it, and we got the grant. So, congratulations to them. I also want to, this is on our Facebook site, as well as on our website. I want to promote this. This is the, um, 2022 Polar Plunge Freezing for a Reason Crestwood High School Unified Team for Special Olympics fundraiser. Okay? Um, and the event is on March 7th. On our website, you'll find it. There is a, a link on there with, that you can click and go directly to. Um, I'm very proud of our, our students and our staff. This has been something, Andrew, for multiple years they've been working on. And, you know, I'm really happy and proud to see what they're doing. Andrew, is there anything you wanted to add to that? I didn't think so. Okay. So, Andrew doesn't like to speak, as you guys have noticed.
You know what I did want to add to that? Is I love the pictures that you have in here of the kids working in, um, uh, the kitchen. Uh, I'm actually looking for the pictures. That was, I, I, I'm so happy to see that that's still open.
Yes. And we've actually, Andrew, you've actually improved it.
Yeah, we, um, we're able to hear, we're through your school. Our, um, high schools, high school is now coming to the school for the class, and then the, um, students here are helping you.
That's great to hear. That was, that really caught my attention. I wish I could find the picture. It's in this pile. Or I would share it with you guys. So, yeah, thank you for that. That was really, uh, good to know.
And as you all are aware, January is Board Member Appreciation Month. It's Board Member Appreciation, Board Appreciation. Um, I do want to say, you know, uh, to the community, to the public, you saw the video. I mean, I think that brought tears to all our eyes, because that reminds us why we're so passionate about what we do. And I'm gonna say something to the board as, that I am, I, I cannot be more proud to be part of this school district and this organization. We have come a long way together. We still have more to go. We're not anywhere near being done. And like I've always said, my job is to work myself out of a job. But I can't do that without the board's support. So, I appreciate the board, from a superintendent standpoint, for dealing with my passion, for dealing with my, my, my agreements, my disagreements, heck, for letting me do my job. I know sometimes we, we don't always, but that's part of the process. And I appreciate all of you. And I can tell you, I know our community and our teachers and our students appreciate you. And what I really loved about that video is it really illustrated, these are the things that we don't see or hear all the time. With 4,000-plus students in our district, there are so many good things happening. And we have so many phenomenal teachers. I make a commitment to the board, as the board has made a commitment to me. We will focus on those phenomenal teachers to take us to the next level. So, board, thank you for everything. Thank you for approving all of the crazy ideas we have. Thank you for allowing us to make the adjustments to the budgets as needed. I believe we're headed in the right direction. I believe we will continue to do so. So, thank you, board.
Thank you.
Other than that, I just want to say, um, thank you to the community for your support through all of this crazy COVID stuff. Hopefully, it'll be over one day and we can actually start talking about maybe some more normal than we currently have. But thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful evening.
On a positive note, I think it's coming. We're almost there. I see a light at the end of the tunnel. Let's stay positive, right? Okay, Mr. Saba, anything from you?
I don't know what tunnel you're looking down, but I want to see that.
I'm gonna stay, I'm gonna stay positive about that.
I, I respect that. I, I, first of all, I want to thank you guys for putting that video together, because, uh, you know, it's great to see that the reason that we're all doing this is, uh, you know, I, I'm short on words there. I really am. It was moving. It really was moving. I want to thank all of you. But most importantly, I want to thank you guys. I think you guys are thanking us, but essentially, what we're doing is really, you guys are putting all the work into this. I mean, with Kristen, I know she's not on camera, but, you know, the backbone of the district, I like to call her. I think you guys all would agree with me. And you guys have just done such a fantastic job. I want to thank all of you, um, for putting up with our questions, and we're prodding because we care. And we know you're doing the right thing, but it takes, you know, um, it takes both sides to make this work. And you guys have just done such a fantastic job. Thank you. I'm look, I'm excited to see what 2022 is gonna bring for all of us. I, I hope that Ms. Barry is correct, that the light is at the end of this tunnel.
I'm always correct.
Yeah. Again, I hope she's correct. I'll leave it there, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Baydun?
Uh, I want to thank the faculty and, and all the students for putting that video together. I mean, we see, you know, I drop off my kids every day, and I pick them up when I can. And, yeah, a lot of familiar faces in that video, which just makes it so much more special, I think, to everyone here. So, I want to thank the, the staff for that and the students. Also want to thank Zo's Good Burger for, uh, Friday, January 21st, put on a fundraiser with some of their proceeds for the class of 2022. a fundraiser with some of their proceeds for the class of 2022, so thank you for that, really appreciate it. And, um, I don't know about light at the end of the tunnel, Nadia, but I always try to imagine that, so, uh, with that, stay safe.
Be an optimist. Go ahead, Ms. Fawaz.
I have to echo what, uh, both of them said, that was a very touching video and I want to thank all the, uh, elementary principals for putting that, uh, together. Uh, very touching and to also thank the, uh, staff and of course Kristen and, you know, um, Dave and Erica, uh, thank you. Um, and then congratulate, uh, you know, to add to him, congratulate Brian Paul and, uh, Batu Hussein and team and, um, you know, uh, Andrea O'Hair on your team and for the, uh, grants for the, uh, childcare. So thank you.
Ms. Jenun?
We can say thank you all day, so many, in so many different ways, but I, I think we do, we all feel the same way and I think our admin, um, you know, having to deal with everything else and, and as well as our custodial sta, custodial maintenance who are keeping our buildings clean and, um, working hard. I mean, it's a never-ending job, a never-ending cycle, but thank you to everybody and thank you to, I'm, I'm, Dr. Musalam for the chocolate, is it, I, I want to be thanking the right, okay, from everybody, why, we appreciate it. Um, of course, we were trying to stay away from sugar, but you know, it'll, it'll be utilized, so.
That's why I gave it to you and I didn't.
So, thank you to everybody. We, we appreciate you guys.
Did you want to mention the tin can raffle?
I was going to let, um, oh. Feel free. Okay, so, um, I was just a reminder that the tin can raffle is February twenty-fifth through, and twenty-sixth. Um, we all know how much hard work, how much work goes into putting that together. Um, and I know the class of 2022 is always accepting donations for the raffle, so if you have anything that you would like to basket in honor of anybody, in honor of an alumni, or anybody at all, um, students, yep, your own senior or even, um, upcoming seniors, um, they're always accepting donations, so, I don't know, who, who would they contact? Danielle, do you know?
They can contact me.
Contact Ms. Elzayat, she is helping with, she has a senior as well, yes, she has a senior this year, so.
Okay, um, Ms. Kaminsky?
Um, well, again, I want to thank everybody and the video, um, was very moving and, you know, the kids are great, we're all here for that. And as far as the light at the end of the tunnel, as the, um, board member that's been on the longest, the changes and the pace of the changes that are being done compared to previous administrations when we moved at a snail's pace, it's mind-boggling. Um, the reading and everything that we do also goes along with that, we get so much more information, but we're so excited about it, so thank you to administration, um, for having these ideas so that we can move forward as a district. And trying to put, um, the city and the school districts together and make us more unified, I challenge all of the businesses in the area, donate a basket for the tin can raffle, it's a great way to get your name out there and to be part of the community. So again, um, thank you to everybody and thank you for our candies and that's it, have a great week.
Ms. Elzayat?
Um, I know it's repetitive, but it needs to be said, uh, thank you for that beautiful video, um, not only to the students and staff that were in it, but to the, uh, production team that put it together. I know a lot of work went into that and it's much, much, much appreciated. Um, that's all I have, thank you.
I got one more thing I want to add.
Oh, he's got his mask on.